So I just, I guess, move for, moving forward, move towards opening the bank account for each escrow that comes into late. Anything that's done for this new lot 34, I think they gave a $500 check and then a $300 check. I'm assuming they're both for escrow.
Well, we shouldn't assume. We should find out one under the fee schedule, the 500 and three have been submitted for.
Five thousand three hundred.
Yeah. The, but I would start escrow accounts based on the type of escrow payment that's coming into you. So if you're getting a sewer escrow payment, create a sewer escrow fund. That way, on an ongoing basis, you can track who submitted it, how much money they have left in it, and if it's lot 34 or lot whatever, you know, you want to make sure you're not dumping money into an escrow account you have now for general stuff where you don't have a clear accounting as to whose money is who's in that account.
I guess my bigger question is what do we want to do with the escrow account? It's not workable. We've had Jill Picata in here who tried to sort out escrow. You had Rosemary trying to sort out escrow. There's not, they tried to forensically kind of put it back together to try and figure out what the escrow accounts are, but at this point, I mean, my suggestion, and obviously Mike per your recommendation of what you kind of think would work, I'm thinking of starting a new QuickBooks account and starting anything that comes in in a fresh accounting setup that is not kind of polluted with all sorts of different accounts in there. I was talking with the auditor today about it and trying to make reconciled journal entries to somehow make it work, but in the end, he's not even sure how, without the history, how to put it back together. He did suggest that we bring in an outside CPA, someone who is experienced in escrows for municipalities and perhaps take recommendations from them on how to sort this through.
So we're trying to see what to do with escrows moving forward, new escrows or existing as well?
The question is definitely with both of them. What do we do with the existing escrows and how do we clear that out? But moving forward, how, how does the board want me to handle escrow accounts? They, I'm assuming, not assuming, Mike suggested that we go ahead and create new bank accounts for each one of those. I think that will probably be the cleanest way.
For each, for each type of escrow payment that you get.
Not necessarily for each developer.
Well, remember, it's different for developers and developments because they, don't think about that. It's really when someone comes in and they've got an application they've got to submit and the fee schedule says they've got to submit X amount of dollars for an escrow. Like if you're putting in just a new home on a single lot, lot 34, part of the escrow is going to be for the township consultant to go out and the code enforcement officer, zoning officer to review to make sure that it's in compliance and building and all that stuff. Other types of escrows can come in for, you know, driveway, you know, it all depends on what the fees schedule dictates as an escrow. With Ridge Press, we'll start getting money in toward the park and rec fund. That should go in the park and rec fund and not be intermingled with the escrow fund. So, you know, based on the type of escrow payment that's coming in, not necessarily the, I don't think you need to create one for lot 34. You need to create one based on the type of escrow payment that's coming in, and then that's got to be tracked on an ongoing basis to make sure.
Based on what type of, type of escrow, so you're saying instead of getting one account for Bridge Press subdivision, there should be, be just a subdivision escrow account?
Yeah, yes. And so when an applicant for a subdivision application comes in, part of their application fee goes toward professional consult review fee escrow. So if they go belly up in the middle of the application process, there's some money to draw on if there's outstanding consultant review fees that have to be paid. If someone's coming in for an individual lot like lot 34 Manchester, that should be in a separate type of escrow, not intermingled with the subdivision land development escrow account.
And it makes sense having a separate account, I think. Makes it clearer, I think will make it clearer.
That's kind of the moving forward aspect of it, the second aspect of looking back in the current escrow account if you don't have, there's not a solid grasp on whose money is whose, as I understand it. And that, I think we can, we can come up with names of potential consultants for you guys to consider, CPAs, an hourly rate for them to go back and figure, you know, untie Gordian's thought, figure out whose money is whose and put it back in order.
That's what they want to tell us.
That's right. And you want an estimate from any kind of CPA you get, and you'd have to, you know, that'd be a board consideration.
It doesn't hurt to see what it costs. No obligation to do it, so I'm fine with at least getting cost for that. It helps clear it up and gives us better transparency on our escrow accounts.
Good enough for now.
Okay, just update, wanted to let you know the 2015 audit has begun. I met with Dave Barrett on February 12th to start it, having a lot of documents to prepare and send to him, check copies, reconciliation, fix asset sheets, depreciation schedule, six time accrual, but this will be going on in the process for the next few months. Just wanted to let you know that it started. Ciana, the bill questions, Mike was able to answer most of them. The only one that I had left was the watching of the reorganization meeting. Is that something that one of the board members had recommended that Ciana Bellar watched the four hours of YouTube video?
I did. I mean, I said that it's out there, but it's, you know, maybe that was to catch up on what was going on.
Okay, so it was more of the direction to catch up on what's going on?
Right, so they could, I mean, they would have to.
As well as to address, there was a personnel questions from the board without divulging what those were and as well as to review that from that aspect of it.
All right, I just added a legal page into the financial report just to track costs in comparison to the previous year. This really meant just kind of said, it's like a barometer to see where we're at, not specifically with, this is higher than this. I do break out the charges like escrow is removed from there. Anything that's specifically to a property isn't on there. Teamsters, that money is trapped separately. That is not taken into consideration on that either. If the planning commission were to have legal representation, that obviously would not be accounted in, that would not be in comparison to last year.
The server.
Yep. I worked with the ComNet, they give a quote for a couple of different options. Basically, our options boil down to replacing what we have with a high-powered server to serve all of our needs, including email. Another choice is to replace the server we have for much less money that would serve as the, for the website, for the file sharing, for the directory and all that, but do hosted email with Microsoft using their government plans. And then, yeah. So their recommendation, given cost and what we're looking at, would be to, to replace the server we have for about $3,400, which would allow everything to function here. And then going with the Government Exchange Online Plan Two, which is $70 per mailbox per year. Right now, we have 37 accounts, and that would be $2,886 per year. Breaking it out, that cost versus the cost of just doing it all in-house is roughly the same, given the yearly cost of the email hosting. I had checked with Mike and with PSATs regarding moving to an online email system. It is possible, other townships are doing it, other municipalities are doing it. The main concern is archiving to have the data available, the emails available, and to be able to transfer it. If we were to stop doing the email hosting and move back to in-house, then we would have to be able to transfer all those old emails, and we can do that, verify that with So really, the recommendation I agree with is, you know, $3,400 for a new domain controller and file server in here, and then the hosting, which would be $2,886 per year. So that's essentially what this sheet is all about, to get everybody an idea of what that is. Any thoughts or concerns with it? I mean, we have budgeted for a new server, so we were just trying to figure out the best option. And it would take probably a weekend to transfer all our existing email to be hosted online one.
Steve, you're kind of the expert in this area. Would you say is this the best option?
I think it's a cost-effective option. Really, the Microsoft recommended route, if we were doing in-house, would be to have two servers, which would be a much greater cost to us, probably around $15,000. You can put all those functions on one server, but you run the risk of data corruption, losing your system, shutdowns like we've had before in the past. Generally, at work, we would not put these all, these functions all in the same server, so I do agree with that. You know, we've had, and my company has had positive experience with the online hosting of email for Chinese accounts. We don't use it internally. We have just our own server here, but for our users in China, we use it. These government plans are geared towards government, obviously, and allows for archiving, which is the main concern with the online plan, so I agree with their recommendation.
Still?
Any thoughts or concerns, Senator Carroll? Do we budget $15,000?
I think it was between $13,000 and $15,000.
$13,000 to $15,000 for the server, so you're looking at total cost for the server with labor at most, $4,600. And then, at most, would be labor to move to the new plan, $68,860. So you're looking right around where we can budget it for, probably around $13,000. It could be less depending on how long it takes to transfer the boxes.
Seems like a great.
I mean, the server we have is very old.
There's no motion, I mean.
No, it's in the budget, so I just want to say everybody's opinion on it. What's done with hosting email, I mean, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
I mean, it gives us better access to the, to the email client.
There could be, but I mean, this, what they're. No, it's not, this type is like the post-stores.
No, it's not post-stores.
Oh, I know, it's not post-stores, but I'm thinking that type.
Yeah, the government part is, yeah, the, the online plan, so.
Now, there should be a motion to approve the ComNet proposal to accept that that's the priority of what they can.
Okay, even though the costs are already budgeted for?
That's correct.
I'll make the motion to approve the ComNet recommendation for a new server and moving our email system to the Government Exchange Online Plan Two. Does that second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Scott?
Could the motion please have the name of the outfit and then?
Outfit.
Okay, as long as.
Yes, the motion has the name of the outfit.
Oh, okay, with the outfit's name?
Yes.
And not to exceed?
Not to exceed the cost in their proposal.
Which is?
Totally, it would be.
On the server, is it just email or is it hosting a website as well?
To be honest, I don't really know.
It's just email. Mike, is it there? Because the township definitely have the in-house, the email, like.
No, it's not. Need the hosted email to change. Some sense it can give you better security because you get better air security with the cloud-based system, and if anything happened with our servers here, they were damaged referably in any way, and they're not backed up, at least, you know, for the online accounts, you do have that backed up.
I don't remember that our website was on, wasn't it?
And that sign, it was still over with.
Fairview Road.
Okay.
So.
The seat doesn't go over the budget line. Tell the investors to pass the bill and read it later.
Yeah, that would be with, I mean, this total is looking at, I think, around $11,500. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye. I didn't say may, I just don't know.
Storm Jonas?
Yeah, we submitted to the county law PA, the PA Emergency Management Agency for 48 hours of storming. We basically chose Saturday at midnight for 1:23 through Sunday, 11:59 PM, 1:24. The cost of the storm reported, we had for labor, $9,142 spent on labor, equipment usage, if we determined it at their rate. We already own the equipment, we didn't have to necessarily buy equipment, obviously, but it would have come out to $18,988. Materials, we spent $9,588, and then equipment rental was $10,179. So just that 48 hours of the storm cost the township almost $47,896. I just thought it was of interest.
So we're waiting to hear if we're going to get any of that money back?
Yeah.
What was the final?
Just regarding the tax collection committee?
The County Tax Collection Committee, as far as asking for our current, our update on your delegates are?
Okay.
Since we had Maria, one of them.
Okay.
Recommended resolution.
Okay, I make a motion to approve resolution 2016-04 TCCW appointment resolution. Questions or comments?
What does that position do? And did you already in that resolution put somebody in?
Yes, the names are, are in the resolution. Connie Martin is the first delegate, I'm the second delegate, and then Catherine Archibald is the third alternate.
Oh, so the whole office staff are the delegates?
Yeah.
And so that's for tax collection, and the only one that lives in the township is Connie. The other two live somewhere else. What does this, what is this, just another bureaucratic thing to put it through, you know, so you have people standing there? That's my check on our truly centralized government. So what's the purpose? What will you ladies do?
So a couple of years ago, the state put out legislation to try to create some efficiencies in tax collection. So instead of each township contracting with Burkeheimer or Keystone, the state dictated that each county has got to create one tax collector, tax collection agency. In order to do that, each county creates its own PCC or tax collection committee, and each township has a delegate to it, which has a vote as to who the tax collector is and the, you know, different agreements. I think we're in a multi-year agreement right now with our current collector, Keystone. And so each delegate gets a vote, it's not a one-to-one vote, a ratio of your vote based on population and the size of your town.
So I know when I audited, is that the 1% tax or the real estate tax or all tax?
No, that's not all tax. That's the, I believe it's just the real estate tax.
The real estate tax? So then, okay, then, of course, the county would better have a grip on the real estate tax. Okay, so then my thought is the 1% tax, I know when I audited that years back, many people were not on the list. And we required, I think it was Burkeheimer at the time, it was in the contract to send us a list so that we could look at it, because certainly we would know if our neighbor's name wasn't on there. And what that list did, it said retired or, or whatever. So retired, of course, would not pay into the earned income that. So this tax position is only for the real estate tax.
This, this person goes to the countywide tax collection committee, which I think only collects, I could be wrong, I think it only collects the designated tax collector collects the real estate tax.
Yes, but if we had a tax collector here, well, only, who collects our, do we have a, is Burkeheimer, who collects our 1%?
Keystone Collection.
Keystone Collection. And do we have that contract with them?
Not sure.
Well, could you, could I please, I hope I don't have to put it right in the request. I would like to see that contract.
So you want to see the Keystone collects contract?
Whoever collects the 1% for East Fowlfield residents. And I think you did tell me they send you a weekly payment. So they do send you weekly. Right, and it's, I see where it's put in as income. So we should have, we had to have a contact with them, and I want to make sure that contract says if, if requested, you get a copy of all the names of the residents that they're collecting from.
So are you looking for the contractor, the list of names?
I want to see the contract, because if the contract doesn't say anything, then, you know, hello, we should have put that in there. I think you're wrong on that aspect. I, well, I don't know. Since we're still doing the contract for that, then these three ladies will just vote on whatever to make it appear like we have some input. But the real estate tax, so who in the heck cares? Who collects it? I, I don't, I don't understand why any of these jurors.
I reserve the right to be wrong.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
This is 4-0. Unfinished business, PSATs, I think I said I should be able to attend still, I just have to find out which day I'm going to go, and what day, the voting day is, is on the delegate for the voting. Any new business? Any public participation at this point? Mrs. Scott?
Yeah, the cable contract.
Yes.
It's with both Verizon and, why is it just Comcast?
Because our Comcast, our current Comcast cable franchise agreement is going to be up in May, but Verizon One, we're still good for a number of years.
Oh, so we do have it with both, we do have contracts with both. And you said it's going to stay the same. Why don't we ask for more?
Because we're limited under the law in terms of the percentage we can get. It's between 3 and 5%.
And we're getting the top?
And we're getting the 5%. Now, all that's a, it's ultimately a passer, it's going to go on whoever's cable bill.
And you're only taxed in, it's a hidden tax on you, that's all there is.
Yeah, that's fine, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is how much legal time we're going to have, chew on the fat over something that's already a done deal.
Yeah, we don't, we try not to chew the fat over it. We provide them our revisions to the draft agreement that they provide, and they provided revisions to our revisions, and now it's just a matter of getting it finalized and ready for the boards considering.
Okay, but I mean, is it a copy of what we had last year? Maybe they've changed, so you have to look at it, is that it?
Our, our current agreement is, I think it's like five to 10 years old. It's not a last year agreement. These are multi-year agreements. The agreements being proposed can be a 15-year term, so, for that purpose, so we don't have to keep renegotiating every couple of years.
Okay. Now, the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors, I know they have a handbook of things out, and they used to have training courses. I used to go to one up at Lyndale, they would have them at different places, for the treasurer, for the secretaries, for whatever. I guess they don't have them anymore. I'm really concerned about the questions being asked tonight regarding escrow. Escrow is a big money loser, and I know back in the 70s, when only two office staff weren't watching attendance store, this township had to pay at least what was caught, over $100,000 to finish road work and a development. And because I, as the auditor found it, wanted to surcharge the solicitor and the staff, only two, from that point on, Ed, I want you to realize, because you brought up the fact of how you are attacked on certain matters because of the way you vote and what you do, from that point on, in the 70s, all my employment everywhere has been destroyed.
Okay, that's not the form. That's not the form for this.
Well, where is the form, sir? But I would tell you, point B, I don't think Connie knows what she's doing.
Well, she's learning, and she's doing a good job so far, and she has been taking training and is additional training coming up. So we're trying to get a hold of the escrow accounts that have not been held for, for years. This was an initiative Connie was working on, because she understood that it was an issue that we need to move forward with.
Well, some of you were on the board when we had the previous treasurer, and we had, quote, township manager, the Jill Picata, hello?
I was there with Connie, I support you 100%, and you have my utmost confidence. You're welcome.
Mr. Rose?
I just wanted to, I know everybody want to get out of here, but in reference to the escrow, I'm sure you, kind of, not to attack any of the board up there, they went up part of it, and not to get back there with $100,000, that's whatever to damn. But there is a problem with administration, and when the contractor sends a bill in, or we, you know, send a bill to the contractor, there's been a lot of them. I can tell you, it don't matter what treasurer you want to talk about, I know all four of them before, even the township manager. We have lost a lot of money in reference to contractors that get billed, all right? And it's kind of tough when records get disappeared in there in forest demolition. And it's kind of tough when records get disappeared in there, in forest demolition, you know, there's one, we all know about the Weaver thing, never did get a permit for demolition, records disappeared, all right? So there is a transparent and untrussed of residents in far as checking on the billing. That's what these developers, they don't get a bill from the township, they won't pay, all right? And that's where the big fault with the administration in the past, and we hope it doesn't.